Discussion, I think the agenda says you're here for two hours, but that's only an hour. That was, that's a misprint in there somewhere. We're gonna keep you for an hour and then
Don't worry, we'll speak fast.
And then we will, the council will bring us to a normal agenda, we'll be gathering that sort of stuff. So again, thank you, I think most of you are familiar with us around the table. So without any introductions, it looks like Sandy Harris is at the podium and he is prepared to make a presentation. Sandy, it's up to you, you don't have, you can say hello first and then you can move into that or whatever, however you want to. Okay? Sure.
Thank you all, Sandy Harris. I'm honored to be the chairperson for the Economic Development Authority of the City of Norfolk. I've been on this board, I think, in excess of twelve years now. And it's been hard to do it, thoroughly enjoyed every day of being on this board. Today we're gonna talk about, we're gonna introduce, many of you know what we do, but I just wanna make some highlights of the key components of the work that our board does. We meet on the fourth Wednesday of every month on the fifteenth floor of the BB and T building in the Development Department for the city. We have a number, our mission is on this document right here. We're gonna review the mission, the assets, projected revenues, our current and projected expenditures, our past and future role in land development, talk to you about a state competitor, the Small Business Financing Authority, and we have some recommendations around that. Our team right now is composed of seven individuals, myself, Jerry Robertson, Jerry is right here, Norma Dory, Norma is, Bob Harris, Michael Lee, Tony Cisco, right here, and Ursula could not be here today. I'm happy to report, the attendance for our meetings is always close to 100 percent. And so we, it's an excellent working body. Okay, the mission, what are we supposed to do? Our primary mission is to promote the creation of jobs. We're supposed to maximize utilization of Norfolk's rural estate, foster capital investment, increase revenue by growing the tax base, and support minority-owned, women-owned, small and veteran-owned businesses. All our meetings are centered around those five points, okay? Sometimes people get us confused with other organizations. EDA, again, we, that's us and the town, Department of Development, they're the paid staff who are on the fifteenth floor of the BB and T building. And sometimes because we do some rural estate development, ours is George Ward's Job Creations, NRHA, I put it, we put it up there for you, is primarily in rural estate development, okay? We were created by the Commonwealth, and then the city basically appoints us as members. So by your political subdivision of the Commonwealth created by the city to acquire, own, lease and dispose of properties to promote industry and induce business to locate their remaining Norfolk. We do this because we're authorized to issue revenue bonds to finance facilities for non-for-profits, manufacturers, and businesses in enterprise or empowerment zone. A key thing to remember right here, when these bonds are issued, these are not direct obligations of our city. I'll use this, I think it's best just to talk about an example. When DePaul or Centerra issues bonds through our authority, they are responsible for paying the interest, they would ensure that the capital is returned to the investors, okay? The interest that is paid is tax-free to the recipients, it's called a municipal bond. And many times you can buy these bonds through a reputable dealer, Scott and Strick fellow Mayor Lynch, you can find these bonds offered occasionally. And they're called the Economic Development Authority of the City of Norfolk, sometimes four percent is due January 1, 2026. And I'll use four percent, let's say, that four percent you're being, that you're receiving is tax-free, okay? We are purely an agent. Also, the second bullet point, when designated by the city, we act on your behalf to provide loans or grants to private enterprises. Now, talk about this in a second, these, these musi, loans that you see occasionally. These revenue bonds, okay, we receive the fees. There's administrative fee within the interest that is paid, okay? The purpose of these fees is basically to reimburse our authority for the cost of issuing and carrying these bonds. But actuality, there's quite a bit of surplus left for us to do, I think, our core mission. To give you an idea of the revenue that is received, let's say there's a $200 million bond issuance, okay? We get on that approximately $250,000 in administration fees. We get that fee as long as that bond is in existence, okay? That's an annual fee to our body, okay? Any questions on that? So when Terra issues a, listen, again, I'll always, I'll talk about Centerra, but they are our largest nonprofit within our city. So when Terra issues a bond and pays that interest, the majority of the interest, of course, goes to the investor, but we get a slice of it, it's called the administration fee, okay? And that's basically, that drives the revenues for our department. Okay? What do we do with some of that money, okay? Rural state development. This is Lake Wright Executive Center, we sure, you all know where this, here's Melitary Highway, North Hampton Boulevard, here's USAA, Virginia Oncology, Marriott Residence Inn, Holiday Inn, and the airport Hilton, you see the runway, so we go. We developed that property in the early nineties. Right now, the 730,000 square feet of rentable building area, it's called Icy, the Lake Wright area, and right now, $6.5 million of revenues come to the city. It's also responsible for 1,400 jobs. You had the early nineties. The second one is Central Business Park, okay? Here's the Walmart right here, Southern Shopping Centers, Tidewater Drive is right here, Soul's Point Road is right here, Walmart, there's Oakwood Elementary School, which is not a nonprofit, Norfolk, here's the second precinct, and you can see, you know many of these people. We have Bob Taylor's projects here, Dominion Carpet, we have the Federal Credit Union right here, which is doing great guns, by the way. We have one acre available for sale, Dominion Carpet, Mark Bar, Distor, Plata, and here's Companies Youth Services in North Shore construction. This is an excellent, excellent project.
Sandy, you only have one lot left to sell, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, oh, we do, two.
Two there and down the block, right?
Oh, sorry, wait. Okay, let me know where that is, here's the Walmart right here.
Right in charge.
Right there. Look at this, 190,000 square feet of office space. $190,000 in rural state investment tax revenues, 720 jobs. This was a plighted area before this area was taken over. I think this is a real success story. Another area. Going forward, we wanna talk, we're looking at, here's Lake Wright East, here's a current Lake Wright Executive Center, there's a piece of property right here we're looking at, it's a Lake Wright golf course. We're talking, this is very early stages right now, I'm thinking how we want to develop this property. Lots of good stuff here. The City of Norfolk, even though part of this is owned by Virginia Beach, the Norfolk City does own the Lake Wright Golf Course. That's in the future. Also, we, to help the city regarding bringing business into town, we do, we make performance-based Also, basically fund, we also fund programs which offset the cost of services to small businesses, like for example, we fund scholarships, the Virginia Culinary Institute, Culinary School out there by the airport, ODU Gateway, Hampton Road Small Business Development Center. Also, our authority acts to supplement some of the, some of the core expenses of the Development Department, of the Development Department of the city.
Sandy, can you go back for just a second? The Culinary Institute, I know that was a big help in getting that thing, or, there was a time limit to that, I think, as far as how many scholarships, do you know where you are with that? Wasn't there like your al, everybody?
From that, but we are looking at it again.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Yeah.
It's all, just for all the.
Right.
Y'all, we've been, they cooked a meal for us one time. Matter of fact, at my house, I had one, one or two students cook a meal for us. I recommend, they're gonna be Stroganoff.
Of course you paid him for that, Sandy, I know that.
Of course you did, thank you, Paul. I'd like to move on. Oh gee, Paul, I never get anywhere, apologies. All right. But, these are core, what we're, basically what's going on here, with the fees that we receive from the bonds, the bond issuers, okay? We can help, to me, remember what happened a number of years ago, the culinary school left? We helped the city, helped, found, helped create this culinary institute, independent institution, we're helping them with scholarships. This is a huge success story. All the restaurants we have in this community, we are providing them chefs, sous chefs, basically people who know something about the restaurant business, they're trained young men and women who have an opportunity now to hit jobs in Norfolk, they're win-win-win. Something we should be very proud of. Okay, we'll talk a bit about this. This is the Virginia Small Business Financing Authority. It's, it's a state agency, their jobs help provide support to small business. In 2003, they were allowed to start issuing bonds for large nonprofit profits. Basically, bottom line, it's competitive for us, okay? 97 percent of our revenues come from large nonprofit profits. It's a threat. But, I wanna finish up with this. We are talking to them right now, talked to them a number of times, we're trying to get some legislative help, that did not work. We are working right now on a compromise. Right, on this situation, the Small Business Finance Authority, this council should know, I think the key is good communication with our large nonprofit profits in the community. They are acutely aware that they need the services of our city. They're acutely aware that when you expand the facilities, that impacts sewer, police department, fire reduction. They are citizens of our community, and as long as we're competitive in our pricing, which we will be, I believe it, this SBA is out there keeping us honest, I think we will, we always will get the first call in terms of getting those finances. And as long as this, as long as this board is made up the way it is, we're acutely aware of this, we're staying, we're communicating well with these organizations, they're aware of our situation, they're also aware of our BSBFA, but, again, they can guarantee, but right now, I think they understand the dilemma that faces us, and they promise to communicate, continue to communicate down those lines, and let us know when they're doing the major financing.
Sandy, where are they, are they headquartered in Richmond?
Yes.
They have one office, they're serving the whole, competing.
Yeah, they're in the whole state. Right now, the, what's on the table right now, Barclay, is a fee share, where if they get, if they get, for example, if they get washed out for profit, it's hit for locally, we would keep 40 percent of it, and they keep 60, that's, that's where it is right now.
Would they cover the whole state?
They'd cover the whole state.
They're picking at everybody's pie.
And the issue, the whole state, the issue I have is that 60 percent of that 40 percent can go to some entity in western part of the state, doesn't help the City of Norfolk at all. So my issue, my point basically is, you know, here these local, these local, local nonprofits needing our services, raising funds through us, getting a, getting a huge benefit, the taxes are benefit, not paying the taxes, they understand the need to raise funds through us.
Sandy, have we lost any bonds yet?
Nothing, any consequences, no. We have a list of bonds, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Brian Pennington's been handling our liaison with the other communities and Economic Development Authorities around the Commonwealth, come up with compromises, and he's done a great job, and we're very close, I think, Brian, to formalizing the relationship, with that understanding of the 60-40 split, best we can do politically. I think Brian has been committed around the Commonwealth, President, we appreciate it.
Brian's done a great job, we've had a couple times, we've been outside the Capitol a couple times, once for sure, we've talked to them in the shadow of George Washington, but.
Brian does good work in shadows.
Senator Orbitin, I don't wanna give too much history here, but, we, we communicate, I have to give a lot of credit to Bob Woller, who's out here, currently in the Development TAF, and Brian, we put together, we reached out to the other EDAs in the state, and we basically coordinated the meeting at Williamsburg, the other EDAs, we had Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, Newport News, and of course, we had the RICO County, others, other EDAs, to talk about this issue, with the BSBFA, BSBFA. They understand the problem, and that's, right now, the law, give and take, we're at the 60-40 right now, that's where it stands.
But Sandy, they have the flexibility to lower their fee to anything.
You got, yes, they are flexible.
Do we have that flexibility to meet the?
Yes.
So when a nonprofit goes to the bond attorney, he goes out shopping?
He can, can, the objective is make sure, is to get, make sure that the nonprofit knows that basically the fees are out there so they don't shop. Please be very clear in our message, yeah.
Just prior to this compromise, what was happening with the legislative change in 2003, and the BSBFA's board to cap their total annual amount to 125,000, we were starting to see swings of our large nonprofits moving with the BSBFA, which was including our participation, and looking on the development horizon, potentially was costing us upwards of six to 10 million dollars, plus any other further issuance. So, through conversations, we've been able to negotiate a compromise of the 60-40 split, which is a lot better than what we were facing beforehand. As I was telling the chairman before, the, the big piece is that we had the opportunity to communicate with our large nonprofits in Norfolk, and explain to them more of the fundamentals of what the monies that are collected on these bond issuance fees meant to the EDA, and our ability to essentially participate in funding helicopter requests, or small business would have a request for different things, and without this fee structure in place, we really weren't able to support those type of activities, and I think the large nonprofits really weren't aware of that being the case. So this was a big, this was a big move for the BSBFA, which essentially had been shutting us out for the past three or four years of dialogue.
With issues, the good news is we had good communication, good two-way communication with the large nonprofits, they do get, and to be fair, they didn't really know what was going on, they're reliable, they're legal counsel, of course.
The 60-40, Sandy, if Centerra approaches you about a, can we automatically cut them in for 40?
Not if they come to us directly, the whole fee stays with us.
So only if they go to?
Only if.
Do they get?
Centerra needs to be made aware that if they do that, 60 percent of the money doesn't stay in Tidewater.
That's what I'm guessing, so.
Well, it's a problem.
If they, if they come to the EDA and say we want a $100 million bond, we get it off.
Bingo.
They go there, they agree to share.
Right. The key thing is we should have the understanding, which they do.
Well, you're on the board, Sandy.
And the question, this was, this was a touch-and-go bit last year, but it worked, Brian, the offices worked very well together, I'm very happy with the results so far. Local municipalities, where you worked, the beach, everybody worked very well together to get some sort of resolution about this. Not perfect, but there is some resolution. Where are we right now? We currently have $2,900,000, we're also proud of this. This money is held at Town Bank, and a program, it's a federal program called Cedars, whereby ideas to, small banks can have large deposits, so this is guaranteed, but we also keep it going locally, so the local deposits can fund local, local loans, so that's a Town Bank right now. Outstanding loans of $200,000, that $200,000 loans to the Symphony, it occurred. Land value is $450,000, that is those, represents those two parcels, that Central Business and Norfolk. These are our fees, and projecting out what our fees will look like over a period of time, you can see the decline to $200,000 in years 2020, but assumes no further business. I don't think you can assume that, I think there, there will be some construction going on, which will keep this line running flat, I hope. The purple line represents what we keep, because the gap represents revenue, represents what I call multi-jurisdictional fees. Example of that is this hosp, is this, example, Centerra did a bond a couple years ago to help fund their Princess Anne Hospital, part of that funding was to do some capital equipment here at Lee Hospital. Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach got some, benefited from bonds being raised through us, we gave a part of the fee. This sharing of fee was initiated by our body a number of years ago. Everybody buys into this program, we receive fees, they receive fees, and we're trying to work towards, you know, working with our sister cities, okay? This is evidence of that, and we've been doing this for a number of years, and it's supported 100 percent by, by our board. Any questions? That's, I think this is something we should be very proud of. So the bonds are issued in Norfolk, but given the fact that some of those proceeds are used to do a, on a capital project outside of our city, the city, and anything of that, this, for argument's sake, let's call it Virginia Beach, they'll get the dollar fee, because they, of course, it ties into what, which one of the consistent in our message, any capital project offer not larger than that, puts a burden upon the local city, which again, fire, sewage, police protection, it's the right thing to do. Our expenditures right now, given, we all know, we all know the big backdrop picture with the large budgets in our city, in our state, in our city. We are helping by adding, taking funds from our, from our, from our pot, so to speak, helping to offset the budget requests from our city, you can see what we're doing. In your fiscal year 2010, 11, $370,000 was from 220 in fiscal year 2009 and 10, for years 2011 and 12, looks like it could be up to 480,000, it's 110,000 for last year. Some non-operating expenses, we do every year, we'd like to fund the ODU Gateway, $30,000 a year, called PTAC, Procurement Technical Assistance Center, you'll know more about that in a second, 47,000, $45,000 for the Culinary Institute. This right here goes to the Arts Commission, $30,000, they're giving that grant in case any of the large arts organizations have emergency needs, we all, we all know what can happen down those lines. They have funded all, I call, all the large, all large arts organizations that I can think of, Stage Company, Symphony, and The Opera, and a number of others.
They don't use those funds, what happens?
It stays there, we don't, we sit, it's in the budget everywhere. We did out, and I'll tell you where I came from, we spent a lot of time about eight years ago, I decided, merits of a certain request, and we're, look at me, I'm an artist, and so, just, it worked, it worked out best, you know? I could take a picture of Monet and my son's prints, so I just, I just, I just, they give it to them. Now, listen, we have some art critics in our board, I'm speaking for myself only here. High-speed rail, this is, I have to admit, this is some of my imprint on it, we support the rail pack-up in Richmond, I however strongly believe that because of the, of this grant we give them every year, you know, to me, it's a squeaky wheel, we keep, the question's constantly being asked, and it's been asked for 10 to 12 years, Norfolk, 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 when do we get that train? It looks good, I keep pushing, guys. I won't believe it's there until I ride that first train and sip my cup of coffee at Petersburg. We give them $10,000 a year. Danny Plauer is the, runs at Richmond, and fellow drinker who used to be at the Congress Room for Holland, she chair, she is now the chairperson for the transportation, and she's very, very keen on making sure this rail project doesn't occur. Here's ODU, Jerry, you wanna talk a bit about this for a second?
Yeah, the, I wanna say a little bit about the investment, the impact from the investment we've made in small business support. All these programs at one time were independent, President Broderick chose to roll them into a newly-formed program called ODU Business Gateway about 18 months ago. The disadvantaged business program was one that assists SWAM, the veteran-owned businesses, by introducing new technology to those small businesses, SWAM standing for small women and minority. That program has been incredibly successful, probably of the three, the procurement assistance program, one that was set up to help small companies navigate the federal procurement programs, they're, it's a real daunting task trying to go after DOD contracts. That again's been very successful, there's gonna be some metrics on the next slide. And the procurement assistance program being in place allowed for SBA to fund a third program called the Veterans Business Outreach Center. I wanna say something about some of the, some of the impact that came from these programs. Hose Masters is a local Norfolk company, it's a retired lieutenant commander, through, through the Veterans Business Outreach Program, launched their own company. You may be familiar with Medical F-3 staffing, that $2 million contract, it's actually two contracts, 1.4 million and 0.6 million, was secured by using the procurement assistance program, Commonwealth Supplies, a little company off Soul's Point Road, they were assisted with a new product launch, Power Compressor is a company that is not so small, but it was one that ran the risk of leaving Norfolk for another, for another city, and we just, Business Gateway just helped them by hosting their international, actually, sales meeting here. The first Norfolk event you may have heard about on TV just a little bit, 150 entrepreneurs met for three days, pretty much around the clock, many of them from Norfolk, five new products were developed. IP Configur is a, is a video surveillance company that we helped move from Houston to Norfolk. I like to say, in federal procurement so far, it's, there've been $120 million in contracts awarded regionally, 29 and a half million in Norfolk alone, and I think Jim Hart over at Arriba Corporation not so long ago got 14 million in federal contracts working with that program. The, and the Veterans Business Outreach Center so far has served, at last count, about 220 I also think, Warren's saying that the Culinary Institute is, you know, that, that program, we just recommitted to that, it's been a great success, executive chef salaries are 60 and 90K, so I think that's a great program.
Can we, can I ask a question about the veterans? Chair, how do you reach out to them? We've been, the Richmond paper, the Daily Press, the Norfolk paper, the Virginia Pilot, cover the fact that there are so many veterans in the area who are doing business. And, I mean, I think there was some national survey that said, that said Norfolk, and I don't know if it did Manhattan Roads, is maybe the best, second-best place in the country, I think Oklahoma City was the first, but we were the second-best country, second base, second-best place in the country for veterans to do business. You know, I mean, that comes back to, I guess, to my thoughts that we need to do more in Norfolk with this huge base of veterans that we have here, to connect them with jobs in the city, but, I mean, because they're incredibly talented folks, but I mean, how do you, how do you reach out to them? Do they just walk in the door, or do you aggressively go get them, or?
We actually work with the TAPS program here locally. TAPS is a, is a, I think I've heard, Veterans Affairs Program, and we work with the Wounded Warriors Program quite a bit. In fact, today, actually, they're having an event, I guess it wound up around 2 o'clock, called, it's called Safe Talk. This time of year, a lot of veterans don't do well in the holidays, and it was an event that was really aimed at, at mental health issues more than anything else. But, we work with the VA in particular, and the SBA, Small Business Administration. But we work with the VA in particular, and SBA, Small Business Administration, to, to try to get as many to come in as possible. And there's pretty much four or five a day that come through the, that come through the Veterans Business Outreach Center.
And they're, and they're sent to you, isn't it? Well, that's a start.
How, how members of the African-American community are faring in your endeavors? At one time, in the 60s, when we had, when we said minority, minority, you know, African-American community was a protected class. Certainly, there have been some Supreme Court cases, Richmond versus Croson, which challenged that. So now you have SWAM, and when you say minority, then there's such a broad meaning. So can you, can you give me an idea of what the African-American community is doing through, you know, the organization?
Actually, for, especially with the Procurement Technical Assistance Program, about three of every five client company we work with is an African-American company.
I might say that Medical X-Ray Staffing is a gentleman that was recently assisted by the Development Department and Jerry's organization, and is doing extraordinarily well with the two contracts he's had. We also did recently a deal with a manufacturer of salsa products, and we came up with a commissary requirement under a federal contract. It's a very, very successful one.
I heard about that one. Thank you.
And we also gave, a year ago, Berkeley Stevens one, we gave them, we gave them a positive. And also one of our board members went, got on their board also, and we talked to them about this. I can say to person though, during World War II, a program like this, that's how my father and my mother, my mother was a program, reach out program of veterans, and that's how they backed us. It was wounded veterans. Military back then, you had to discharge the military, put in these Red Cross WAC units back then, units for all the women. And my father was, he was, he took a test, he was supposed to be a librarian. Among the four-letter words, he's hell no, I'm not going to do this. My mother says, yes, you are. And that's how he started.
Well, you know, we're a part of that. I mean, we've been at war for 10 years, and, you know, there are lots of veterans here. We walk by every day, we don't even know they're, they're here. And they need our help, and they're entitled to it, for sure. I just, you know, for a city like Norfolk, where the military means everything to who we are, I mean, I just want to make sure we're, we're right at the forefront of taking care, not only taking care of these folks, but also putting them to work. They are a great complement to our workforce. Just trying to understand their issues. You know, the Wounded Warrior Program, you know, we've, we hear about that, but there's so many organizations that seem like we're trying to do good, and it's hard to ferret out, you know, the good from the not-so-good, or the, or the better from just the good, and who we should be dealing with. And I think it almost, it needs a really concise effort that tries to push, push it to the forefront. And we don't have that, you know? And I'm really glad to see this. I think, I think right now, Mr. Manager, this is the only, that I'm aware of, I mean, any group in the city that's even trying to get, employ veterans. I mean, we ought to have policies within the city about employing veterans and things like that. We keep back, we keep talking about it, but it can't seem to come.
There's a new program called the Community Blueprint Program that's really aimed at trying to get all these efforts on the same page. And there's a, there's a new effort that's just being launched, it's called, it's being called ET3, it's Empowering Troops to Transition. And what it's aimed at doing is, well, a lot of these veterans left to go fight in Afghanistan and Iraq, they had long care services and all sorts of other small businesses that, and they didn't expect to be gone very long, and they ended up being gone five years in some cases, and longer. They've come back now, their clientele is gone, and the aim of that program is to try to help them get refocused and get them back in business, even if it means some, in some cases, them working together with each other.
I always think it's critical that we keep funding the programs where the civilian leaders in our community need military leaders. It's all too rich, they get asked questions, where do we go? Basically, who do you call? Its organizations are great, but these veterans don't know about these organizations. That's critical, you need to know about it. That's always, that's the big thing about me. It's wonderful federal programs, wonderful state programs, but these fellows who get out E3s, they come out, they don't know where to go. It's critical for these people to know the programs, our people. Expenditures, these are just, because we have these assets, people know we have these assets, we are putting a freeze on these going forward, giving some, give us a question about future revenues, not so worried about that, but I think it's, given some budgets, pressures that we're facing, I think it's best to hold off on this. With the last 12 months, we need 25,000, 25,000, you can see it right there, EDMS, that was for their capital program. Centerra, that was for the Nightingales, Fox, the Zoo, NATO Festival. Future land development, Lake Wright Gulf, we did that a bit, we want to develop that. And Virginia Beach, we're looking for some new board there, in the future.
May I ask you a question on that Lake Wright?
Yes, sir.
Burton Station issue? There are several residences that are still there, you know, along North Hampton Boulevard. In the event of a condemnation lawsuit, who would suffer the exposure? Virginia Beach?
Yes, sir.
The beach property, sir.
The property is in Virginia Beach. We are working and cooperating with Virginia Beach on what could be of assistance to the Burton Station Initiative. My understanding is that they have reached accommodation agreement with the community of Burton Station, but one of the things that would assist that program is the extension of Wesleyan Drive. And that's a question that we are continuing to work with the beach on as it relates to the size, the scope, the timing, the cost factors involved in what the beach would like to see as, that will bring additional value to the Burton Station Road Initiative.
But if you, if you jointly ventured with Virginia Beach and there was a huge condemnation suit, and you were not, and the project was not successful, then would you suffer a loss of, would Virginia Beach handle all of that exposure?
To an extent, it would depend upon the terms of agreement that doesn't exist right now. And so, if we quote joint ventured, that would have an implication of sharing, so that to an extent, it would all depend upon the agreement that hasn't even begun to be negotiated yet.
Anyone questions on that, sir? Right, this is a, we put this in there, saw some charts. We put this in revenue, I keep on, our revenues aren't forever. Our revenues are predicated basically upon the capital projects, basically of our large nonprofit profits within the city. And I'm, I'm personally optimistic, these projects, anything, they're going to expand within the next five or six years. We should see more large nonprofit, capital projects within our city. Not so nervous about the revenue. Recommendations, we need to continue to talk to our, the Virginia Small Business, we need to let them know what, what we're doing, and we need to maintain good relationships in Richmond. We will continue to work with the city in terms of our requested operation funds. We'll continue, of course, generating, working with, with the city in terms of strategic executive objectives, on which we expand the tax base, generating new and recurring. I think it's important that we can get one-shot deals, but the legacy of our organization should be the recurring revenues, which is most in taxes, most important in today's environment, creating jobs. Happy to report that we're going to get a number of new jobs in the Wacoia Center here shortly, high-paying jobs, and jobs, 100 jobs in excess of $75,000, which is wonderful, wonderful for that part of the city. So continue to focus on Central Business Park to its inclusion, and we'll continue to hold off, hold our oratory grants to, not, not for private purposes. We have a better handle on the future capital, capital expansion projects by the large nonprofit profits. Okay. I think all organizations need to have a vision, and one thing within our city we have, nobody else has in our whole Commonwealth, is a light rail system. All kidding aside, we are an urban city. We need to embrace our urbanization, and we have done that, and we have done a really good job around this. We all know how well this has been going so far. The recommendations to make it better, in my opinion, are to tweak as we develop our city's tax base, as we attract new businesses. People will become more and more attracted to this. Look at the success we have so far in all businesses, in all military operations. You basically work, build upon that success. You have a good stock, you buy more, you buy more of it. You focus on your successes. Let's really focus on this, y'all, because there's huge opportunities east of here, east of Norfolk State, and other developments. Look what's happening at Newtown Road Station. I'm from New York, and the development around Long Island Railroad stations is phenomenal. Small pocket, 20, you know, businesses, they employ 20 to 25 people, because it's easy to get, you don't have to drive your car there. That's not, that's not the shallow thinkers' overwhelm with here. We got something, and it's successful beyond its wildest, wildest dreams, over 5,000 people per day now, right? Close to 5,000. What was 2,900? I think this is exciting. I ride it, it's always clean, the bus driver, I buy into it. It's a, it's a long-term process. But I think right now, as a city, city council, as your EDA, please know that we are going to keep working, working with this, to leverage this, to add more business to our community. It's distinctly different, it makes us, makes us unique. We are, urbanization's coming back, and we're there. So this is what, in my opinion, is what it's all about. And keep in mind too, keep in mind the vision. Right over here, we're going to have, in about a year and a half, Amtrak. And we're going to have a new station over there, a transportation center with our HRT system, you know, link right in with, with the light rail. We're going to take a train from here up to DC, we'll leave it. The first trains will leave around 5:30 in the morning, probably. It'll be in DC by 9 o'clock, you know, the return trip will be in the Union Station in DC around 6 o'clock. The train's not going to terminate DC, it'll terminate in Austin. It should be marketed, often, to DC. I think this will be a year's success. So this light rail, coupled with the Amtrak connection, train, railroad tracks are being built everywhere, it only comes to Norfolk. It's a great thing for us. I think this right here, Amtrak line into the light rail, will be the impetus to put us forward so we can expand light rail further out to, further east. That, that's, that's what, you know, I'm sorry, my, my time is up.
We're editorializing.
This is so bad. No, no, this is big. You all know the problem, you certainly know the problems to get us started. That's past that.
If I'm not mistaken, Airport Authority issues bars as well.
Yes, sir.
Are you, do you have competitive, competing clients, or do you have a particular niche, or what?
We just work, Airport Authority, believe it or not, does some, does some bonds to local private schools.
Yeah. And And then, and secondly, with the, the industrial park off of Souls Point Road and Oakwood Elementary School still there, how important is that, that building being sold for future development?
It is something of interest to us, the, the success of the park and the fact that we are now limited in the amount of available acreage. We would certainly love the opportunity for a future business use, but those decisions, I think, are
Schools are the city council.
Really, I mean, the school would, would have to declare the surplus, and then we would take ownership of it. But I think the long-term plan has been, is it would move out, that it would be developed, that property would be developed as part of the Commerce Park.
They're temporarily housing C sub programs in there until they find a permanent location for them.
How much USAA is still in the park, in their building?
Lake Wright Executive Center's USAA facility has 100,000 square feet of a 400,000 square foot building. So there's, that's the anomaly that's created, and a big jump in our vacancy rate is the extra 300,000 square feet that continues to be looked at by several prospects, and we're hopeful that, you know, before too long, some of that space will be absorbed back in. But when USAA left for Tampa and San Antonio for what they were doing in that facility, they left 100,000 square feet on the first one.
All right, proceed. Thank you, Sandy. Great presentation. I'm so glad that we, we finally got the opportunity to have this meeting and to, to meet the EDA. But my question, questions centers around goals and objectives, okay? Being a former member of the EDA, trying to really understand, your goals and objectives.
We've never, we've never recovered from that.
Right. I understand. Tell the laws. But the piece that I think is very critical here is the, the goals and objectives of the city, as well as the EDA, and economic development, has to align. And they're, they don't align, okay? When I, through all, it's a great presentation, but when we talk about, you know, looking at the city holistically, and looking at some of the challenges we have, you mentioned the enterprise zone and empowerment zone. Well, one of the most valuable pieces of property that we have left is in the hub zone, enterprise zone, empowerment zone, is Douglas Park, where we agreed, where we agreed to park the passenger rail trains. And so, to me, when I look at that from an economic development standpoint, everything that you just said makes sense. So why would we not look at an area where it gravely benefits us, again, because it's in the hub zone, and empowerment zone, and enterprise zone, where we know what that does to incentivize businesses from coming, moving into the city in an area like that? And so, again, understanding what the goals and objectives are of the city, and trying to look at parks, not just downtown, or strategically, the same places we've been, Central Business Park, Norfolk Commerce Park, I mean, looking at other areas where we can, again, clean up the blight and put that land back on the tax road. That's the piece that I'm not seeing. In terms of, how do these businesses know what we have here? That's the thing that I've been talking about for, for years now. What are we doing to go out and bring people in to tell our story about these areas that we have available and that we're open for business? And there's a lot of areas that are, again, there are some areas that are more challenging than others, but be that as it may, they can still absorb businesses within the, the nodes in our city. And so, again, my, I, I, again, my, the question goes back to, who's driving? You guys are a conduit, you work closely with the Economic Development Department. So I'm, I'm assuming that they're bringing these, these opportunities to you, and, and you guys are seizing the moment with these opportunities, okay? But there's no input coming from this body in terms of things that we feel that are, that are important to us, areas of the city that are important to us, that we need to look at, take a snapshot, and then see whether or not we can develop it. Just right off, I think I had a, a preliminary conversation with Jerry as it relates to Lafayette Boulevard. Again, there are areas that we've done the heavy lifting inside the community. Now we're looking at commercial and retail hubs. Well, we know that you guys have the capabilities to be able to help us in some of these areas. But that information is not feeding itself to you guys to understand, you know, what we need to do or to better position ourselves for you guys to be able to help us, you know? And then the last part of that, part of this, this, my question is, you have, we had Hampton Hills Venture Capital, which Norfolk Re-Redevelopment and Housing, basically, is a conduit for their board as an extension. Does that in any way compete with you guys? Because I see that merely as a, I don't know why, I mean, that's something that we do, I don't know why we didn't, we don't work in concert with your board, the EDA board, you know, to, to maximize the opportunities there, you know? And I, I mean, I know what they do, but is that a concern of ours?
In terms of housing, I don't think so, Jerry. In terms of Anthony, Gorgi, they
I mean, they did, they did
That's housing, their housing?
No, they're not housing, they're hotels, they're, they're shopping centers, they did the Spring Hills, was the suite, said Old Dominion. they, they did the Spring Hills, was the Suites at Old Dominion?
The Housing, yeah. Spring Suites with us.
But that was, they had, they had a component in there too.
The ambition of us, of us.
The Hampton Hills.
The one, the one, you're talking about, the one.
Right, right.
They did the New Market Tax Credit.
Right. So I mean, I, I understand with the, right, when I was talking about the bonds, I'm just saying in terms of the venture, understanding with the, understanding who's involved from a city standpoint, if we got E D A involved, or we got Hampton Hills Venture involved, do we know who's the parties that are participating? And how do we leverage those funds a lot better to maximize our potential?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think you're right. I mean, in terms of the cooperative arrangements that we have with N R H A, we are working with them in certain areas and looking at them as a potential conduit for some of the economic development activities that we're currently engaged in, whether it's the under school downtown, or whether it's Altonia, or it's private ownership that we're trying to assemble potentially with their help, or it's the Decker Junkyard on Monticello down on the side of the rail tracks there. So we work closely with them, we're working with them right now on the Ace Hardware deal at Twenty-Six Streets, Monticello Church. They are being the conduit for the assembly of the property, some city properties involved. We're working with them in terms of getting that property assembled so that the Ace Hardware deal can go forward. I think you raised a very interesting question relative to where we have some opportunity over at the Ron Park area, or with Waste Management, the former Waste Management site that we own. We just were looking at and had in the representatives from Globe Iron, it's in Vacance, it has their properties up for sale. We now have the ability to assemble along there with our Waste Management site and the Globe Iron site, to take a look at whether or not we might be able to do the small industrial flex night park. We know we've had some interest from some of the private developing community, taking a look at initiative like that, because we can come together and size these properties.
But, but we need to think broader than that. I mean, for example, you know, when I look at, we've got rail, passenger rail coming. When you go to Staples Mill, that's where they house the trains, there. You got, you got an opportunity to create a T O D, Transit Orient Development, in that particular area there. When you look at the acreage that, that Globe Iron possess, and you look at what we've already have established, land that we control in that area. You, you have the opportunity and the potential to do something great. Jobs are very critical in this city. So you have the opportunity to, to sit down with the Amtrak and look at the types of vendors or contractors that, that do business. If we're going to house trains back there, we got to service those trains, you know? So why would we not get ahead of this game and look at how we can create business, how we can, who, who service trains in Richmond, who service trains in Boston? And look at these contractors and look at how they could, they could better help us with our local economy, because I, there's nothing that, that would tell me, or, or that would suggest to me that the cost of doing business is, is less in New York than it is to do it here, you know? And if you got the trains now, we're not the cul-de-sac anymore. We get these trains coming in here, we're open for business.
Yes, sir.
You know, and so all I'm asking you guys is to take a broad look at these areas that, again, that are, that are, that are special in their own right, because there's not a whole lot of land in this city that holds all three designations, empowerment, hub, and enterprise. And so we need to, we need to look at that and maximize our potential in terms of developing areas, not just saying, well, we, we got this area here, and, you know, maybe we could come in and do flex, flex what? You know, we need to go a little broader, a little, a little deeper than that, and look at how we can create something that's going to be vibrant to the city for the next fifty years.
Can I slide in something real quick? I, I couldn't agree more with Anthony on this, because my question is, in the last ten years, how much economic development dollars is spent north of Little Creek Road? There are people that want to succeed from Norfolk in Ocean View, and because the, the dollars are not being spent across the city. Now, we realize we're not going to draw a Wells Fargo building in Ocean View, but we have studies that have been done that show that that area can support mom and pop shops and restaurants, and we're not investing, we're not spending any dollars down there. And there's probably more open land down in Ocean View than anywhere else in the city. And that's how people feel, that's how the citizens feel in Norfolk. And we have done some great things, but it's not aligned with the other parts of the city. We've spent millions of dollars down in Ocean View trying to make that a great place to live, but there's no commercial, there's no retail to support the people down there. It's not aligned with what we're doing. In the second statement, I'm glad Andy just walked in, is I didn't see anything in here about port development and really capitalizing on our ports. As the military's considering moving out of this area, I believe, and I think some other council members probably believe, and even the city manager believe, that that's where we're going to have to make up the job loss and the economic loss is due to our port. We know that when the Panama, did it open yet? Panama, pretty soon.
It's twenty-fourteen.
Right, that was two, pretty soon. And that we're going to become probably the, the premier port, because we can handle the bigger ships. And, you know, I, I know the city manager's looking into this, but I didn't see that anywhere in the presentation. And I would have liked to see what Anthony was saying, as well as, or, you guys do a great job, there's, and we obviously realize that there's room for growth, but just, I would love for you guys to have one of your medians down in Ocean View, if you haven't been down that way, and see the potential down there. And people are crying for that, they, they would love to see that development happen. And you guys are the stimulus for that.
Obviously, we're a corner too.
You're getting ready to get yours.
Sorry?
You're getting ready to get yours.
Yeah. I feel like that there's definitely a, a link missing in communication between our board, council, you know, it, we had lots of valid points here today that maybe haven't come to us. And I think if we don't know, and you don't know, you know, we pretty much unclothed ourselves today with what we do and what we feel like we're about, but we need to be about more. Obviously, we need to hear that from you.
Well, I think, just to be followed with, I'm going to say two things, Norma, I think, I think that you, you pegged it. I think there was, perhaps there was not a connection that we should have had, and, and maybe this is a, a good opportunity now with the new manager here, to begin that connection with you. And Marcus is, as you hear, is very numbers-driven economist, and, and Anthony really is. I think all of us try to see where, when something happens, whether it's N R H A, whatever it is, what, what are the jobs? And that's really even what we discuss here. How many jobs does this make? And following on what Tommy says, when, when we talk port, what we're really talking about, and I'm just going to take it, just narrow it just a little, I think what we've really discussed has been the, the shipping lines, the insurance companies that go hand in hand with port. Not necessarily the blue collar job that follows it, even though we take it with, of course, increased container or coal traveling, but in reality, why aren't we bringing in these shipping companies that can come here, whether they're, they're main offices, world offices, insurance companies, world offices, regional offices? That's, I think, what we're thematically looking at. And I know that things have been, you know, this is, time, change doesn't happen overnight. You know, I think that we kind of get it, but this is a great way to start, because you have, Chuck's in his, right now, his interim, who knows, you know, he's doing a great job, I can tell you. I've seen the energy on that floor is totally different than what it was over the last year. So, you know, I think that it requires our vision to get together with you and to make sure that, I think it needs to be, we need to have a dialogue that goes often. I mean, it doesn't maybe have to be at this level every speech month, but I think that it needs to be at a level where Chuck is meeting with you all and then coming to us post your meeting, reporting to Marcus, and then Marcus gets that to us, and then we can in turn give back. And I think that's where we've missed it totally for quite a period of time, at least since I've been on. I, I think we just function differently, and I think we're, we don't want to function like that anymore.
Well, I have to say too, that we do strongly encourage, like the DePaul presentation, that they hire local contractors, that they don't go outside of that area. So whenever we're, whenever we're in position, that's, that's definitely a strong position we take. Sandy is really strong on that.
I just want to throw in, we've actually, as a board, had that conversation of, communication is critical in regards to what you do, whether it's personal or whether it's business. Communication is either going to make it or it's going to break it, lack of it will hurt you and so forth. And that's something that we've talked about, is because our information comes from the Department of Development. So we get the information that is given to us, and if there's more that needs to come to us, and we need to have the conduit to make that happen. But we've had the conversation among ourselves as a board about improving the communication and getting a little more feedback, so that we know the direction that we need to go, you know, versus us sort of taking it and just doing what we have to do, because that's what we have to work with. So I'm glad that we're having this, this conversation today, and, and hopefully that will give us the opportunity to improve that from the council to Department of Development to get the information to us. And that's part of the reason that some of the things that you addressed, we need to know what, what the direction is. We're going in the direction that we believe we're supposed to go, because we, we have limited information. So I'm glad we're having this, and maybe we can kind of work and do what we can to, to improve that, so that we can be more inclusive in, in the overall view.
And the only other thing I would add to this conversation is that, when we go to trade shows, whether it be the shopping center convention, I E the others, I know we have one coming up in New York, if we're going to take the time and the energy to go out there, then we least need to have the, the presentation, the city's backdrop, to be able to attract and let people know that we are open for business. You know, I went out there to Vegas myself personally to see how we did business. We had no showboards or anything else to show that, here's the city of Norfolk.
How long ago was that, Anthony?
This was about, this was about four years ago, you know?
Yeah.
And, you know, like I said, Rick was out there working hard, you know? But we, we, all of the big developers that are in this area are out, you know, it was, it was fortunate that we had, as, as in our nuzbom, that we could use their, their, their setup to be able to have interviews and entertain clients that are interested in the city, you know? But we should have our own backdrop, you know, that speaks to the city of Norfolk and that we are open for business. Everybody out there that you would want to bring in a city are there, you know? And we, and we miss it. There's no way one or two people could run around and give cards out and talk to people. But all of these people out there for three to four days, and, you know, they, they all have their, every other city has their backdrop, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, all of them out there, competing for the same businesses that we're competing. And I've, I've said this around this table once, and I use something as small as, we got a city of about two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand people, we're the, we're the, the hub of the region, but yet there's certain things, we don't have a T G, we don't have a T G I Friday. Everybody else around us have one. We don't have a Red Lobster. Everybody around us have one. We don't have a Carrabba's. Everybody around us has one. And so I'm thinking, I'm looking at little things like that, that you think, well, that don't mean a whole lot, but yes, it does, because people in the city of Norfolk have to drive outside the city of Norfolk to spend their money, you know? And so there's no reason why we should not be able to attract, you know, businesses here, especially downtown. I mean, like I said, we want to try to provide stimulus and, and opportunities for every part of our city. But I truly believe we, we, you bring them into downtown, and then there are resources and, and monies to be able to help those fragile areas throughout our city. But those are the things that are very critical.
Can I make, can I make a point? The key thing is we go for business, you know, I hear what you're saying, I agree with you, conception.
When you left, you was talking.
You talk about those type of chains. All over here, Bob Keel, may he rest in peace, told me at Heritage Bank, with that model, how many deposits did Heritage Bank get at the new mall? Zero. Where's the payroll come from? Zero. These large groups you're talking about, their banking's done out of town. I want to make sure that as we talk to everybody, everybody needs to be included, I want to make sure that we have the proper atmosphere, where business, I'd much rather have a two-nineteen owned by a local restaurateur than a Red Lob, than Red Lobster. And that's why I disagree with you slightly, but.
But Sandy, it does not hurt business, that's the, there's a perception, there's a perception that if we attract national change, it's going to hurt the mom and pops, and that's not true, because if that were true, then a whole lot of cities would be dead. It just means that it brings more people in, and more people have opportu, they, they get into downtown and look at the opportunities that we have for them. If we can, if we stay stagnant in our growth, and you're talking about passenger rail going from here to here, and you only got five restaurants, then you see how that plays later on. That won't play well.
Well, I think, I think it should even be, and I, and I understand what you're saying, and I know that I've mentioned this to Chuck recently, because I mean, Chuck just really took this, this position as interim head. But one thing that I know Tommy and I have talked about is why, again, going back to the shipping industry, primarily you find most of it in New York, yet if you look to bring that shipping industry here, the shipping carriers and the insurance companies that, that really follow them and go with them, and sell Norfolk itself, you go, I mean, primarily they're in New Jersey, they're New York, you knock on their door, just a, just a knock on the door, and I know Chuck's done this perhaps in the past, now I don't know how long ancient history is, but I know it, we've talked about it. But if you knock on the door and you tell them, hey, listen, you know, we're, we've got space in downtown Norfolk for sixteen, seventeen dollars a square foot, and you're getting class A space, and you're in Paramus, New Jersey, or Trenton, or wherever you may be, and you're paying fifty-three dollars a square foot, and you, you begin that push to bring that industry here, that's, I don't see why we just don't put somebody in New York, frankly. Fly, fly somebody up on Monday morning, put them up in a Super eight, and, and let them, let them knock on doors, let them eat at Red Lobster, and let them knock on doors, all five straight a day, is what I'm asking. And go to every shipping company from, you know, Olympic Shipping Company, Hellenic Lines, every one of them that are there.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. And I just use the analogy as a, as a restaurant, I'm not, I just use that as, as an analogy.
As I say, taking that next step further, where you're there telling them, you've got, you're paying sixty bucks a square foot in Manhattan, why don't you come here? And if you want to get to Manhattan, we've got so many flights every day, we got the train going to D C, old keeper culture, look what we have in the city.
And us did, we'll go either.
And, and in fact, and in fact, use Merce and John Reinhardt as the example, because they came from there. Am I right, Chuck?
Well, what I might say is that actually C M A C G M does have its.
And ZIM, and ZIM?
ZIM did come out of the World Trade Center in September of the, two thousand.
But there's, there's hundreds more.
There is, and Maresline Limited has its, it is, that is exactly the argument that we make when we are there, we're paying fifty-three dollars a foot. We have a property that is available to you all in for half of that. The cost of operations, once you're in here, you cover the eighteen months of moving expense that is traditionally the cost of moving. Every dollar after that goes to your bottom line. For example, ZIM estimates that they save four million dollars a year in their operations cost by giving it in Norfolk.
Let me take one out. The shipping lines are the cheapest, cheapest in the world. I mean, they'll squeeze a dollar to get out of here. Get out of here five minutes faster to get back on the road.
One problem that we have had is that while there was an expansion mode in particular in the shipping lines, as recently as four years ago, they went really flat and are just now beginning to reemerge on the other side of this. We're in discussions with several shipping lines to expand their operations a great deal, and it's now coming back.
Well, let's look at the insurers too. I mean, let's look at the insurance companies that go with them, let's look at the, the rail and trucking industries that go with them, let's, besides, I mean, we've gotten off of Southern, yes, but I mean, let's look at the other industries that are, that follow hand in hand with the shipping industry. So anyhow.
The last thing I would say, Bo, is, is the, the, the last caveat to this is retaining businesses. We lost Cooper Business, second largest contact lens company in the world. And so we started, when we look at, I don't, I don't know what role you guys played in, if you had, had an opportunity to play a role, but I met with them, and I knew that they wanted to expand, you know, right here in, in Norfolk. But again, I, I, you know, that's a whole other story, that's, that gets me mad every time I think about it, but companies. companies, uh, really wasn't much we could do about the full plan. But again, we have businesses that are growing and we don't want businesses to continue to grow here and then outgrow us and leave us and go to other cities. So retention is, is a very critical piece in terms of what we do. So you guys better understand what businesses are here growing today and what we need to do tomorrow to help incentivize or help these businesses move to the next level is very critical. And so I, I don't know if that comes to you, but that needs to come to you guys as well because you guys could be in a position to be able to help somebody. But I think if we look at, you know, look at it holistically, again, getting everybody to the table around the city, whether it be Norfolk Redevelopment, Housing Authority, Hampton Roads Venture Cap, EDA, Economic Development, that we can, uh, not only bring new businesses in, but we can keep the businesses and, and, that, that we have here and help grow these businesses and help grow jobs as well.
Keep in mind, we did during the light rail construction, Anthony, remember that you set a program where we did, um, give, give loans to, um, Norfolk Masters, Wells Key, what, to Keywood, um, Business Interiors. We gave them five businesses.
Okay. Um, it's been a good meeting. The manager wanted to start this whole thing at five. That's all we need to back it up. I, I do think it would help us if maybe, you know, I know it's hard to schedule time, but we could use a couple hours talking as you, as you're, however you, what you do with your economic development, with the Department of Development. Um, or even when, when you hire the person, when he brings him in here, how the council feels about the way the department is, is organized, where we think the emphasis ought, ought to be. I think that would be a good discussion, of course. And also, you know, would probably serve us pretty well every now and then just to take a step back and look at results, see how far we've come. You know, it's like over the last decade. I think it's pretty dramatic stuff when you look at other, what other cities, where they are, what they've done. I know we've got a lot to do and I know there's a lot more we can do and all that, but I, I think we've made a lot of progress just in the last decade. So, you know, I don't want to lose sight of that as well. So, all right, why don't we?
It's been very helpful for us. So, yeah, we're all supportive of you all.
Well, I'm, I'm impressed with the Old Dominion Gateway thing with the veterans issue. I think we can create more jobs with the veterans issues. It's almost anything we've talked about myself. So, okay. Well, why don't we, we're going to go to dinner. It's not here yet?
It's here. It's there.